Good afternoon. I'd like to call in 20 minutes into the morning, October 16th, 2024. 5:00 PM, as anyone just around you will know, but I'd like to note that we are not live streaming at the moment. We're having technical difficulties and it should be posted tomorrow sometime. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. Mr. Murphy.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united and up to the front.
I approve the agenda. Simu, second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Monitoring items: Children's Literacy Initiative update. Dr. Diana Green, and I will turn that screen over.
Well, thank you, Madam President, board members. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Dr. Diana Green with the Children's Literacy Initiative. And they're going to talk a little bit today about some of the work that I've asked for them to perhaps do some consulting with us on. Specifically around how can we improve the educational outcomes and student achievement here in Berkeley County? Through a dive into how our curriculum resources, our instructional planning, and even our professional development is geared toward our standards and aligned to our state assessments. I will be remiss if I didn't say that my experience with Dr. Green is very rich. After I was a principal and worked in the West Virginia Department of Education, I took a wild hair to go to another school district in a completely different state. And Dr. Diana Green was the deputy superintendent of Manatee County Schools at the time. And I had the unique opportunity to work under her as a deputy superintendent. And then she became the superintendent. And I worked with her as the executive director of secondary schools, as well as the executive director of professional development and learning. And I will say that there is not one person who, I think, shaped my philosophy of what it means to be a high-quality superintendent than Dr. Green. And so I had not seen her in probably close to eight years. And so it was a reunion of sorts this afternoon. So thank you, Dr. Green, for coming and visiting us and providing the board with some information around what it is that you're doing now, your organization, and perhaps how the work can improve the outcomes and the experiences for our students and our staff here in Berkeley County.
Thank you, Dr. Sacks. And it was indeed my pleasure to work with you, Ryan. I know you give me way too much credit, but there were many things you brought to the table that I still remember. So if you want to know something interesting about Ryan, just ask me a little bit. Can share something.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm for that, that I'm thankful that you shaped him into a fine superintendent, so maybe I should wait.
What am I supposed to do?
No, Ryan has the table with many gifts and I'm just honored that he feels that I imported something that shaped him to who he is today, a very young man. I knew Ryan would be a single.
Yes. She did.
Yeah.
Yeah. And she gave me a hard time and I was going through the whole wedding preparation thing. She was telling me all the things I was doing wrong. But she shaped me into the husband that I am.
Well, let's move on. Good evening. I'm Dr. Diana Green. I'm the CEO of Children's Literacy Initiative. And with me is Amber Haynes. She is the associate director of what we call Portfolio Two. I live in Florida. Although Children's Literacy Initiative is headquartered just three hours from you in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And Amber lives in Houston, Texas. So we are a national nonprofit that is focused on ensuring that every child receives high-quality literacy instruction. Because the data is telling us that if we do not start to focus on every single student, literacy is, is starting to be very difficult. Since COVID-19, literacy scores are starting to decline. Students are coming to the classroom with not the same skill sets that they came pre-COVID. And our goal at Children's Literacy Initiative is to support school districts. We are not the type of organization that walks into a school district or a school or a classroom and says, "I'm going to take everything that's in my head and import it to you." No, we're here as a partner. We're here on this journey together. And hopefully, if it is a positive relationship, they will learn from CLI and CLI will learn from Berkeley County. I wanted to just give you the roadmap of our presentation this evening. We're going to talk about our history, our reach and impact, our approach, how we handle our work, our core service model. And then we're going to zoom in to discovery in Berkeley County and looking ahead at the next steps. CLI has been around for 35 years. We were actually founded by a woman by the name of Linda Gass, and she was a librarian. She believed that children living in marginalized neighborhoods needed to have access to high-quality literature and high-quality books. And in the beginning, that is how CLI started. We started delivering books into neighborhoods for children to have book ownership. And about five years into that process, Linda came to the conclusion that, you know what, it's not enough just to put books in the hands of children, that they can take home and keep. If they still do not know how to read, they're not going to be able to read those books. And that is when CLI came to the realization that the real magic is what's happening in the classroom and started providing professional development and coaching to teachers. CLI applied for the I-3 grant, for those of you who are history buffs about education. That was in the era of race-to-the-top funding. And at that point, CLI received an $18 million grant to take our process national about coaching teachers, providing professional development. It was so powerful and successful that CLI, still today, is on the WebWorks Clearinghouse by the federal government on educational practices that can show gains in education and classrooms. About 2019, that is when CLI also came to a realization that our achievement graph is still growing between all student, minority students versus Caucasian students. And CLI does a lot of work to try to help school districts. How do you truly ensure that every single one of your students are receiving high-quality literature? And the data bears this out. If you look at this screen, in 2022, only 33% of fourth graders were proficient in reading on the National Assessment of Educational Progress. That's all students. Over here, for Black and Latinx students, only 17% of Black students, 21% of Latinx fourth graders, scored at above the proficient level in reading compared to 41% of white fourth graders. And so it is important, no matter whether your district is very diverse or not as diverse, that the focus should be on making sure all children have access to high-quality literacy instruction and have access to rigorous literacy instruction. And when we say rigorous, we mean on grade level. And does that mean every student will be on grade level? No, it does not. But what it does mean is that we support teachers on how do you scaffold to help those students realize that they are being seen and valued and help them reach to grade level. And part of that process is recognizing that all your children come from very different environments, very different homes. But yet, everyone should have high expectations for all students to ensure that that change can happen. But many times, it isn't just about having high expectations. Many times, districts do a lot of great things. And sometimes you can have too much of a great thing. Sometimes you have too much of this and you have not enough of that. And you just got it all over the place. And so what we do, what our goal is to do, is to help you define what really is working in your district. As a former superintendent, it was always very important to me for us to review where we are. And if the data bared out that we've been using this particular curriculum or product and the data was not showing improvement, I would constantly ask the question, why are we using this? It's not bearing out what we need. Is this the problem or is it something? Or did we implement it too quickly and we didn't really train teachers? Or the teachers had training, but it was face-to-face and then we sent them off to implement. And so it is very important to not just say, "Well, this isn't working. Throw the baby out with the bathwater." It is very important to maybe have a new set of eyes. Someone who's not in the picture, come in and evaluate the picture. So look at our demonstration of, those little pins represent projects that we have across this country. As you can see, we're heavily located in the northeast part of the country, but we have projects in Florida. One of the pins that will be put up is we just started a brand-new project in Dubal County, Florida, where Amber actually lived. And we just started a new project where Amber lived in Houston this year. And so the projects that are listed here are some of our really large projects. Meaning it involves an entire school district, or UC Massachusetts. We are statewide in Massachusetts with the Department of Early Education and Care. Elizabeth is known as our legacy partner. We've been with Elizabeth Public Schools since 2015. So much so that in Elizabeth, New Jersey, we have two projects. One for their bilingual students, one for DED, non-bilingual students. And one of the things that we have held true to is that we have bilingual coaches in those schools that have large population of bilingual students. So Elizabeth, New Jersey is one of our crown jewels that we love to talk about and support and can see the impact that we have had with them. But all of our projects go through what we call a core service model. How we do our work. We want to make sure that we're not being teachers here about CLI. Oh, what are they getting ready to come do to us? It is not due to anyone. It is due with you. How can we take your voice and make it be heard? Ryan knows that I'm a big proponent of teacher voice, principal voice. I want to hear what they think. And my big motto is that we need to have diversity of thought, but one line of thinking when it comes to action. And it is the diversity of thought that you take all that information and bring it together to develop a strong strategic plan of deciding how will you move forward? What are the things you will continue to utilize? And what are the things that you may start to think about, should we phase out? So another slide showing our impact. This past year, we've served over 57,000 students, over 3,000 educators. Part of what we do, which is not why we're here this evening, we also do parent engagement. We remember 35 years ago, we started as an organization delivering books. We still have over 15,000 books in our inventory. And when we work with partners, we provide parent engagement and we provide them with books. Because we still believe book ownership is very important. Even in this AI age, technology age, there is nothing better than having a beautiful, colorful book in your hand. And when you see a little five-year-old holding it in their hand, you just see magic happening. And I think we've served over 2,000 schools. That little picture is over the number. But we've had a very strong impact across the country. And our partners believe in the work that we do with them and how we support them. We are almost serving. We are a very happy organization. Anytime we work with people, we want to do a survey. Do you think we, how did you feel that that training provided some type of change in your behavior as an educator or as a school leader or as a district leader? Our surveys show strong agreement and support for our work. 98% either agree strongly agree that coaching sessions are valuable use of their time. 97% agree or strongly agree that what they learned in coaching sessions will improve their instruction. And 96% agree strongly agree that they feel prepared to implement what they learned from a CLI coach. Coaching is at the heart of what we do. It is not where we start. Because even a great coach, I'm a former athlete, contrary to what I look like right now. My coach knew where he wanted me to be. My coach worked out the plan about, well, she's a 110 hurdler. How do I make sure she's going to make it to the state? The coach worked with me. The coach saw my strengths. The coach saw my areas that I needed to grow. And so that coach worked with me. It was a give and take. And lo and behold, I won the state championship, 110 hurdles. And I give it all to my coach. My coach didn't teach me how to be a hurdler. My coach learned how to bring out the best of what was already inside me and helped me be a better runner. And that's what we believe at CLI. We know that teachers are working hard. We know they have so much on their plate. Our goal is to be that second pair of hands to help bring out the very best in them. And so this is our approach. We have a core service model built on four categories. Discovery, vision setting and strategic planning, targeted coaching and development, and step backs. We are here to actually only talk about the first two sections of our approach when we are in a full engagement with a school district or an individual school. Discovery is our way of figuring out what's happening in the school or what's happening in this district. We always do intake meetings. We never allow our coaches to show up to the school and people don't know that they're coming. We do intake meetings where we meet with, if the superintendent is engaged, the superintendent. If the superintendent wants other district cabinet members to be present, we will meet with them. School-level principals. Those intake meetings give us information. What is it that you hope to accomplish through this? What is it that you want to see happen in your district or in your school? Then we have teacher and student focus groups. We then go, and this is where I think leadership has to be vulnerable. Because then we go ask the teachers, "What do you think?" We ask them, "What's working? What's not working? Do you believe the professional development you're receiving is helping you do your job?" A little later, you'll see a couple of questions that we ask of teachers. And then we also ask students. Hey, what's your favorite part about reading instruction? What's your favorite part about your ELA block? And if they come back and say, "Well, nothing." I mean, that tells you a lot. They're telling us, "Well, I don't like anything about what's happening." And of course, you know, sometimes an eight-year-old, not everything, sometimes everything is not great. But we believe that we do need to live student voice, teacher voice, and also principal voice. So we take all those voices together, along with us actually going in to observe classrooms. We only observe with the leadership. Never go into a classroom without leadership. Because we need to collaborate. Do we see the same thing? So we, in my last participation in a classroom walk-through, I walked with the superintendent and a principal. And when we came out to have a conversation, the superintendent and I had an agreement about what we saw. The principal saw something totally different. And we had to start asking questions. And so what was it about that listen that you felt wasn't there? Because two of us saw something very different. And so it is important to hear the voices of everyone and then collaborate with leadership when we're walking through classrooms to say, "Do we all agree what effective instruction looks like?" And once we get that agreement, where do you see possible areas of growth? Where do you see areas of strength? That we not, we want to also continue to enhance those areas of strength, not just focus on areas of growth. And then we ask for a bunch of data in our events. We want to look at student work. We want to see what have your test boards bared out over the last couple of years? And take all of that information to do step two, vision setting and strategic planning. We come, we talk about root cause analysis, theory of change, identify high-level focus areas. We bring back information to the superintendent. And we say, "These are areas that we recommend that you might want to focus on." And then we have evidence of why we're making that recommendation. So we could make a recommendation that we believe all of your kindergarten and first grade teachers need a refresher professional development on the science of reading. What is the evidence? When we talk to your teachers, they indicate that they struggle with implementing the science of reading. We talked to 50 teachers and 48 of them out of the 50 said the same theme that they were struggling. And so that is, that recommendation is not just based on, "Oh, we're the experts and we're just going to tell you what to do." It's based on, we've listened to your employees, your people, and we look, we're looking at your data and this is what it's saying to us. And we recommend that you should do this, this, or this. And then it's up to the district to come back to us and say, "Well, I would like to talk about this a little bit. Here are the big things I think we need to focus on." And we would then develop a plan that says, "Well, we can provide targeted coaching and development to address these big areas that you want to focus." And so normally, I don't presume the entire core service model. But we are here tonight to only talk about what we would like to support Berkeley County in doing is going through discovery and developing a strong strategic plan that would say, "We, these are the recommendations that we feel will help your district move the needle more for all students." And so I'd like to invite Amber up because Amber is going to talk about what that discovery will look like in your district if, when CLI would come and do many of these things, the intake meeting, the teacher-student focus groups, the classroom learning walks, and the data artifacts analysis.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening. I'm Amber Haynes. I am an associate director of school partnerships and supports, supporting public health too, which is a wide range of places that I won't name off at this moment. But very happy to be here to walk through what our coach for support partnership would look like. And I don't know how to put their words. There we go. Thank you. A quick overview before we get a little bit more in-depth in some of these areas that Dr. Green mentioned around our discovery process and our strategic planning. With Berkeley County Public Schools, we would like to, we will be collaborating with school leaders, district leaders to be able to examine literacy curriculum implementation and just overall instructional practices, literacy and practices in the classroom. We're focusing on non-elementary intermediate school to start, right? To be able to really get a snapshot of where instruction is and to get a better understanding of the learning community. And then leveraging a range of data sources, we're working towards to create a strategic plan that Dr. Green just mentioned. Kind of hard to feedback there, but just a little bit about our methodology and our approach. And again, Dr. Green mentioned, we start off with looking at data and artifact analysis. It's really important to be able to see not just what we see in instruction in the classroom, but also where we are on paper. And being able to review program documents, looking at alignment with evidence-based strategies, alignment standards, as well as what is actually being put in front of students. Is what students, the work that students are doing, is it aligned with standard or are they just performing well on this task specifically as it stands? Then we also, again, side-by-side classroom observations, conducting those with school and district leaders. I'll go a little bit more in-depth into our process shortly. And then that gives us an opportunity to be able to assess the current teaching and teaching practices that we see. But not just looking at the teacher lens, how are students receiving this instruction? What actions are they taking as a result of what the teacher is providing them at that moment? And then also again, overall, looking at the implementation of the current literacy program that they're teaching. And as Dr. Green mentioned, we are very big one voice. We believe in hearing, not just seeing. We get a holistic picture when you look at what's on paper, what's happening in classrooms, but also the lived experiences of students, of teachers and of leaders. And that gives us an opportunity to get that qualitative data that will help us to be able to create a great plan. And so one of the things that we ground our work is our teaching and learning framework. And it is a, gives us the opportunity both on paper and digitally, we have a digital component that centers research-based literacy practices that allow us to have specific look forms into the books and materials that are in classes, into teacher actions specifically called out, student actions, and then the overall class ecology that we know has an impact on how students receive instruction in class. And so we have a specific instructional lever for us to focus in on with specific look forms within each of those indicators. And then it allows us to be able to streamline the process because it does have a data, a technical or a digital component of it that allows us to be able to produce reports that you see here. So as we're going in and doing our side-by-side with leaders, we are able to then take our norm consensus on ratings and input over the end, which allows us to be able to produce reports, which helps us to be able to see at a school level, at a classroom level trend that we see, as well as district level, to be able to aid in that discussion around what we're seeing in classrooms. So I told you I would tease out a little bit more around our process for our approach. So starting off with our data and artifact analysis. This is an opportunity for us to look at the lesson plan for the lessons that we'll be going in observing, to be able to even discuss strength holding up the lesson plan. Sometimes what we have on paper is not necessarily what we see when we go into a classroom to observe. And so being able to have a landing to that aspect will also aid in us getting a more holistic picture. Looking at student work and really identifying whether or not the tasks that students are being asked to do and that they may be successful with or not be successful with, is that aligned to what the rigor of the standard is asking? Oftentimes, we have a partial understanding of what a standard is and we try to give a task to that. But it's not necessarily meeting the need or meeting the level of rigor that the standard is asking. So we're able to really take a dive or a deeper look into what students are doing and holding that up against what the standards actually say they should be doing. And then also again, looking at the materials. What classroom texts are being utilized? What learning material, overall program, is being utilized within classrooms? Are we seeing that teachers are adhering to curriculum or spending a lot of time using supplemental materials? Are those supplemental materials even aiding towards the end goal that the lesson was supposed to be? Are those supplemental materials even aiding towards the, the end goal that the lesson was supposed to be moving toward? So we'll be able to look at a lot of those pieces to be able to then guide us into our focus group. We have context. We understand the context on paper of where the district is and what is happening within classrooms. But we really value making sure that we hear voice. Not just hearing, again, from teachers, hearing from leaders, hearing from students, what their lived experiences are because that is the, you, you get a lot from having a conversation with someone. We may see that there may be some struggles in implementation, but why? You don't know until you have to sit down and have a conversation that allows you to get to a meaningful level of understanding. So if you see a couple of varying questions that we were asking leaders around professional development opportunities that their teachers and leaders themselves receive, and not just what they receive, but what would they like to see in order to better support them? Procedures, what's challenging about being able to implement your literacy curriculum? And even what some of the biggest habits that may help us see maybe where there are some areas that we want to be able to boost the already successes they're having. And then students, it's important to hear their lived experience. They are the ones who we're here for, right? We're student-centered. And so understanding what they have learned recently, do they know what they're they know why it's, why it's important and how it connects to them being able to be successful in the future. And so now we've already looked at the paper, we've had an opportunity to have conversations, and then we get an opportunity to go in classroom. And so what we do, we always start off with a pre-brief. And that pre-brief, pre-brief, excuse me, allows us to really get content, um, better context of the school community from the school leaders themselves. It allows us to know or, and really get familiar with the tool that will be utilized in the norming for our student, our, our learning walks. We get to go into those classrooms side by side, get that snapshot of instruction, and we always have hallway deeper or some type of group in a small space that allows us to really be able to see if we are, do we see the same thing? What are some of the strengths that we saw? What are some of the possible areas of opportunity that we, that we, that we saw in the classrooms as well? As Dr. Green mentioned, sometimes we don't have multiple sets of eyes. Somebody may be something that the other person doesn't see, so we don't like to go in alone. We like to do this in partnership so that we're all moving and learning together. And yes, we are a survey happy organization because we like feedback. And so our course data and impact evaluation system, what we call CDs, is allows us an opportunity to really hear from participants when we do training, participants for other, um, participants in coaching. Does we have um benchmarks in the middle and end of the year to really be able to see overall partnership support? Our feeling so that we are able to use that to drive our support and move forward in the best way to support you. And so I just spoke a lot in a big mouthful about our approach. And so, what's next? Well, we're here. And then the next step after this will be for us to be able to have a district leader intake meeting, which will give us an opportunity to again discuss in more depth the tools that will be going in, getting some of those, those questions to learn more about the district overall before we go in to do the learning walk. And so there's a range up there within time, right? We're looking at within October, November-ish to be able to get into um classrooms to be able to have our learn walk so that we can work on being able to submit a report of our findings and to engage in strategic planning with statistics in order for us to discuss what are possible next steps that we can And so the mouthful that I have, I'm going to open the folder thirty questions. Is there something to resonate or any questions that you may have?
Um, I have a lot of questions, but board members first. Michael? Pat? Damon?
Um, someone at the, we're presently I saw where you, I had one question which was answered in your honor. Parkland schools and Dr. Sachs, you had the nine schools in mind?
Yes, sir. Um, it would be Beddington, Rosemont, Winchester Avenue, Burke Street, Opecan, Tuscarora, Valley View, Berkeley Heights. Uh, let's see here. Uh, it'll be in those, it'll be in these schools. Uh, Eagle Orchard View, North Meadow and South. And I, I think it's also important to, to also provide some context. You know, literacy is the, is the primary goal behind this sort of deep dive into what's, what's occurring in Berkeley County. The, the reason that we're taking a look at literacy first is that even though we know that math is, it's one of our Achilles' heel, is that we're also, you know, trying to make sure that what we're doing to meet the requirements of the third grade success. Um, as you know, is, is something that goes into full implementation in another year. And being able to not only make sure that what we're doing to set the foundation of our students is solid around literacy and that students, we're preparing all of our students to be on grade level by third grade. It's also identifying what are the things that we need to do that for students that are not at grade level or are falling behind at grade level. Well, first, why is that? Is that because of the, of the, of the delivery? Is it because of some of the resources aligned to the work that we're doing? But if they haven't, the interventions that we're providing, whether it be through summer programming or extended day opportunities, that those are also back quality. The other thing that I think that we've also been able to flesh out as it relates to our mathematics instruction is that students can under, they understand the concept. It's the application of the mathematical concepts that they struggle with. The application usually on an assessment is again, it's a word problem. It's a word problem. They have to understand and comprehend what it's asking them to do so they can set up the mathematical equation or, or solve the, the mathematical problem itself. And so you know, literacy is um, um, is the tide that lifts all ships, so to speak. And so that's one of the reasons that um I reached out to Dr. Green and the Children's Literacy Initiative initially was to say that we could really take a look at what are we doing in K three to prepare students, but while they're, while they're providing that, it's, let's get a comprehensive review of how we're supporting literacy, you know, in all of our inter, primary, intermediate, middle schools. Uh, so I just wanted to provide some of that context there as to why literacy.
And my second question, and goes to administration and or against, is that we're in our second year of three-year contract with a lot of schools and principals who I hope working well with this new program. But I just want to make sure the gears mesh and that our people are not torn by two advisory groups that may be creating more chaos in, in continuity and, and success. I'll throw it out there.
Well, thank you. Um, you did not see one single resource, one single curriculum, one single anything on our slide presentation because everything we do is in partnership. And so I know that you have model schools out working with your principals and our goal would be to partner with model schools. Our ultimate goal, model schools is mostly working with your principals, is getting all the way down to the classroom. So we will be a partner, not, oh, one more thing added. Uh, and that's why we need their input. We need principals to tell us, yes, you have this going on. What else do you need? Or is this providing everything that you feel like you need? And can you tell us how is that now impacting what's happening in your classrooms?
Amber, Amber, my last question. We have two hundred hundred subs. So I was looking at the states that you had there and I'm not familiar with all of them, but New Jersey, I think probably has a high number of certified people in their classrooms as well as Massachusetts and the other schools. There are many people who have not even been able to be compared to be classroom teachers in total. And they may be halfway through their programs or something like that. So I'm just wondering, how do you, you've been working with them, I don't know the breakdown of the nine schools what percentage of their teachers are certified? You encountered this uh issue before in other states?
Absolutely. We didn't care at all. Um, if you give me a little personal privilege to share a quick story. Um, we have a charter school that half of the teachers left. And they could not find anyone, so they, they put pairs in to be the teachers.
Pairs?
Para.
First I thought you said parents.
He can.
No, okay, I'm sorry. Parents. Um, and uh I went to see one of our coaches working and this was a full emergent school. And this full emergent school, the children don't speak Spanish, but they're all learning Spanish. And it's kindergarten. And it was total chaos. And the coach comes in, the coach tells me, you need to know she's not a certified teacher, she's a paraprofessional. I saw the coach working with her. That day, it was total chaos. And I thought, this is not, this is not a good thing. I came back to that same classroom in February. By February, those children could speak Spanish. Those children could tell me what they were learning. I was doing the learning. They could tell me what they were learning in Spanish. At the end of the year, these students um Spanish devil's um like quadruple. And the teacher will tell you. It's only I survived because of your coach, because she came in, worked with me. Uh, when I needed modeling, she would model the lesson for me. When I needed help with lesson planning, she would sit side by side to me and help me develop my notes. So we have experience. Um, we are a first degree A. You saw that we were in the entire state of Massachusetts. That's one of our largest contracts. And we coach community daycare teachers on how to teach learners. So we can coach. We can coach.
We didn't, um, haven't contracted, we haven't talked about. So we, um, so the the bid, I, I think that it came in even correct if I'm wrong. But I think that the, they were, they were the lowest bidder when we put it out for, you know, competitive bid. Um, and it was eighty, it's eighty-three thousand and eight dollars. Uh, for uh, yes. Like I said, it was under the threshold, but again, I, I want to do all of have an introduction to them to give me feedback to make sure that, that as a board, uh, any questions were asked, that, that there was a comfort level if we were to continue to move forward of the contract.
I do want to state that this contract is to do those first two steps, actually, discovering strategic planning. But we are not internally coaching. We're here to help them see here are the things we recommend that you need.
Well, some of the um questions that I'm looking to ask, um, because a great concern to me was the instructors that aren't certified. Who are the instructors that have alternative certification that we don't know about teaching?
Correct.
That's a concern to me. Um, and I wondered how much to start off with, do you survey the teachers first? Or do you survey, who do you survey first?
We could survey a number of people at the same time. Um, but we start off with our intake meetings with Dr. Sachs and his team, whoever he deems are the people we need to meet with. Then we, if he says, we're good, I want you to meet with the nine principals, then we would meet with the nine principals to, to talk to them about, pretty much giving this similar presentation of how we function and how we work. And then as we go through the process, we would develop a calendar. Oh, these are the days we're doing walkthroughs. These are the times we're doing surveys. Uh, we, if we're at your school, we want to meet with, you need to choose a group of teachers that we can have a conversation with and ask questions to find out the information. So really, it comes from that intake meeting as to how the district would prefer that we support them.
So to me, this would have to work hand in hand with model schools. Right?
Yes.
Because uh when we uh initiated a contract with model schools, one of the things that the board was adamant about was taking something off the principal's plates to be able to get this done and work with model schools. So if it's working hand in hand, that's wonderful. But if it's something that we're putting on their plate extra or the teacher's plate extra, because in my thinking, we have a little bit of everything. Uh, little pieces, little pieces, little pieces. And then we ask teachers to brush, go onto it, and I can see sometimes how now that's just my opinion.
And so what we're here to find out is, you're headlining, what would make it stop? And we try to gather all that information to say, Dr. Sachs, these are the things we recommend. Uh, I'm just gonna make up a scenario. You indicated you have over two hundred non-certified teachers that we might recommend. We recommend that you keep doing everything that, but something you need support for these two hundred non-certified teachers. And we recommend that you figure out a way to provide coaching to these teachers because uh, you're currently not providing. And they're the ones who, all teachers' heads might be spending, but theirs has spent off the top.
Do you also, would you also incorporate um working with the pairs when you're working with the teachers or?
Yes, we, we work with paraprofessionals, um, teachers.
Working fast.
You know, if they have contact with literacy with children, then we would be uh able to work.
I think it's also important, board, is that, you know, we talked, we talked about the, the financial impact of of this, of the contract. The work is really, correct if I'm wrong, Dr. Green, is, is really only several months to be able to take the assessment, to give us feedback for us to think about, how do we want to move forward as it relates to uh aligning curriculum resources, maybe it's, and I, I'd like to, if, if you don't mind, expand on, on one thing here in a minute, but you know, this curriculum resource is in place, then maybe it's not as effective based upon the feedback from teachers and for whatever reason. And so it might be that you're gonna suggest in our strategic plan that we need to find something to fill this hole. Or that you have two things that are doing the exact same thing that is duplicative and it's not economically and financially, you know, uh advisable to continue doing that because you're not getting a good return on investment. So that work is really to give us advice, suggestions, the, the whole, and that's where they're gonna be getting the feedback to teachers, the, the uh the sit-downs with teachers to get their perceptions, to do some of the instructional walks with principals along with model schools and say, what, what are we seeing together so that they're getting perceptions of the principals? Are, is there capacity to recognize effective strategies in the classroom uh around student engagement and artifacts of learning and formative assessments? Those were the, are those things in alignment? Because that's what they're gonna make recommendations of. Well, you need to improve principal capacity, instructional leadership capacity. You need to look at, at the primary level, um, the basal and, and phonemic awareness, for example. So, you know, they're gonna take a look, correct if I'm wrong, at our core adoption, our supplemental resources that we have in place to determine what is, what is a good return on the investment for student learning? And what is duplicative that is maybe that too much of for our teachers? Um, so I just, I wanted to, I wanted to focus on that, if you didn't mind. Um, the other thing I think that would be important to, um, I would like to ask you about, and that is, you know, the Children's Leadership Initiative, um, we've talked a little bit about making sure that our, our students uh from diverse backgrounds, that we're meeting the the instructional needs that they have. Uh, you shared a slide, Dr. Green, that talked about the national, the national average, um, and especially on Nate, but when I look at, just so the board is aware, when I look at our, our GSA scores in Berkeley County, for example, um, our uh for our twenty-three, twenty-four school year in uh literacy, um, our uh our, our achievement was right around as a district around forty-two percent. Um, uh, and so our, our white students were around forty-four percent, our black students were proficient around thirty-one student, thirty-one percent. And our Latino students were around thirty-five percent. So I think And our Latino students were around thirty-five percent, so I think that, that, that trend that you had shared. Is, is here, um, and and then of course, I think we could break it out further with our students from low-income families and those sort of things.
And your students with disabilities.
And our students with disabilities, thank you, um, and. But I, I guess I'm interested because, you know, one of the things that, that I saw on your slide, and I, I, I was hoping maybe you could talk a little bit more about it. Was the teaching and learning framework, and you had um, sort of your assessment on read aloud and uh, share text. You know, there, there was a couple of different things I saw, there are critical literacy, there was a, a section on diversity, inclusion and social justice and that. Can you expand behind what it is that that's all, that that is trying to do? Uh, as it relates to meeting the, the needs of all of our students?
So it is based on making sure all students have access to high-quality texts. And having access to high-quality text means, one, it should be developmentally appropriate for that grade level. Two, if it's beyond third grade, on grade level or above. Three, children should be able to see themselves in the text. Um, you, children should not only be able to see themselves, but they should also be able to learn about other cultures. They should be exposed to a wide, wide variety of texts and ensuring that. They feel that they are validated, and instead of looking. Using the deficits of children, that we use the assets that they bring. And meeting them where they are, and then how do you get them to grade level? Um, all too often, the research shows that students of color. Are generally in remedial classes, getting low-level uh, access to texts. Being worksheet to do, uh, and not being exposed to. On grade level, social studies, science, all the things that. Um, we know that will ensure that students can be not only uh, good readers, but joyful readers. That they enjoy reading. Uh, most students don't enjoy reading because they struggle. And they don't know how to fix it. And it takes an adult who un, tries to understand each individual child. And those children, um, and you specifically, we specifically say black and Latinx. But students with disabilities, many of the students, and students of poverty, and many of those areas intersect. They can be Latinx, stu, and a student of disability, and a student of poverty. And the goal is to ensure that those students, they have a right to have access to the high-quality. Uh, rigor that students who don't have a disability. The key is, as the teacher or the paraprofessional or the leader, how do I engage with these students? And how do I meet them where they are and get them to grade level? And this, like I said, is not on our side, we also do parent engagement, we also talk to parents and saying. Hey, you have to be a part of this process, what?
I just have one question, but I'll forget it. To ask about that. When all students of. And then we say, well, say black or Latino or other ethnic. These students do not get the um, information as a white child does. Is that because of. Sometimes I have a hard time understanding that.
So it can be a number of reasons, and I will not pretend to project for Berkeley County, cause I don't. Know Berkeley County, but as a former superintendent in Manatee County. Where my largest minority was Hispanic students, forty percent. Um, we knew they were migrant. So, we knew for these months they were not in our school. And so we developed habits for them, work with their families. Hey, when you go to Michigan, to take the strawberries. You need to work on these things, we need you to do these things. That is seeing who they are, not saying, well, you're a deficit because you're a migrant. I'm gonna see you, validate you, and here's how we're helping you. And so when you're back. Those schools knew, hey, we gotta, they would do like a three-week review to catch them up or. See where the areas of gaps that they had, and help fill those gaps.
And we don't have that here with Martin, although we used to have a big migrant population that last year came back.
We have this running thing between the two of us, I start talking and she'll forget and.
Yes. Cause that was on the diversity meeting, I said.
Part of the, part of the issue too is, like, they've talked about. Well, sometimes it's quite a bit, you get bored. And and so if you're bored, it's. If they, they want, if they don't, they struggle with that, they don't get it beginning, they just give up. Who about this or that? So it's, sometimes it's.
I had the pleasure of having a different teacher that made us. Read one of every genre here. Different authors, different things that we could, we could bring in, you know, different uh. Make it look like we were sitting on the beach, with the beach chair, or a beach, beach towel or something, maybe fun, she may have fun. Um, I don't know that I would have had the same love of reading, had it not been for Ms. Recker. But, you know, so it made such an impact, I know, I remember her name, I remember class, it's, it's, it's great for women. Um, because we are in an election year, and things are so contentious. Um, I'm gonna broach the topic of the social justice and equity piece, because there's, there's, I, I. I'm wanting to get the definition um, from you, and so that we can come, we can go back to parents. That are, or, or other individuals in our county who are, are looking at those. Hot button um, words and, and help them understand what this looks like, right? Um, so it, you have a rating system, it looks like on the one slide, and I'm, I'm actually looking at um, the slide that. You referenced CLI's teaching and learning, um. It says the text contains racial, cultural, linguistic stereotypes or inaccurate information on the topic, that's one. And then subsequently, all the way up to number four, um, text often tends to inaccurate. Accurately reflects topics and the identities of people within, and is either culturally, culturally relevant. To the children in the classroom or provides them with a window to learn about. It, it has that range, but in between, there's these. There's, there's a couple of words that I just wanna make sure. Um, we get the definition, number two says text contains an incomplete or unauthentic picture of the topics or identities. What does incomplete or unauthentic picture mean? To, to, to the rating scale on this, and what types of criteria make it incomplete or unauthentic? Because some people will take a look at that and go, who defines? Incomplete or unauthentic picture of topics, I'm, I've got the ability to say that there's some things that I've learned in history that were. Inaccurate. And there are some things in our history that was absolutely spot on. But at the same time, we have a lot of individuals who would say, no, what are, you know. This is what I was taught, so this is absolutely true, even though we've got evidence that refutes that, so. I just wanted to try and figure out, what does that look like for, for you guys as you're evaluating?
So many times, it's presenting, we might be walking through and they're doing social studies. And they're presenting accurate information, so it's, but you may come read a book of. Um. Name the book, but I know the book, and they're presenting the character is a slave. And they're presenting that they're happy about. That's a incomplete depiction of.
Because that might be the only book that they read.
Yes, and that would be an incomplete. Well, why, why would you? What was in the book that you felt needed to be shared, that you would read this book to children where. Your child who is in the book a slave, but all it talks about is how happy you think.
And this is where I would assume you would ask questions so that you can get that diverse voice, where you're saying, okay, yes, we've read. And, and read a lot of articles by folks that reflect how slavery was horrible and inhumane. But there's, there, you will find pockets of those who maybe saw it as security, because that's all they knew.
If there was a trend of that.
Right.
Nothing that that book couldn't actually be read, but it needed some context around that.
And that's, right, and I'm, and I'm wanting to make sure that we're diving into and asking the teacher those questions of. You're not saying that this means this is every single person who was in slavery. This was a dynamic that was different, but majority. Felt this, or like, you're asking questions, is I guess where I'm getting at.
So maybe I'm saying another book on the other side.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there is, there, that's what I said, that there's the example of, but in the time that you're going through the classroom, that could be the only book that they're reading at the moment. And I, that's why I'm saying, are you asking the questions and say, you're bringing in all perspectives, right? I'm just saying, I'm asking, cause I mean, there will be questions asked centered around that, so that's why. That's all.
And I think the context is important, because the, the context of, of how they assess and the, the. What does it look like, I think is important so that we can explain it, I think that, you know, giving that example. That, that she had mentioned is just one way we could probably do that, cause that's, that's a pretty powerful statement.
It is, it's very.
No, I will say, we don't see it very frequently. It's not like a frequent.
Not pervasive.
Pervasive, um. That we're in with our partners, we're, we're seeing this. And many times, a district may say, well. I want you to use the framework, but I only want you to look at the literacy parts of that. But our goal is, if you're doing these high-quality literacy parts, then the children that. Are the minorities in your classroom could feel belonging to that. Classroom, and this is how we can help you.
Get there.
Get there. There, if we talk to the children in your class and they say, I'd like to read, but we don't read books about characters like me. Then we would have a question. Your rec, your classroom library might need a few more books that represent the children, all the children.
Yeah, understood, totally understand that, yes.
When, Dr. Green, when you find holes or pockets where something's lacking in meeting um, the standards. Um, you know, or the rigor, um. When you make a suggestion for the strategic plan, are you gonna say you're, this is an area where you don't have enough emphasis or. Or, or resource, and so you need to think about that, where you provide examples of what you could look at? Or do you ever make recommendations as to different products or resources that you know fulfill that? Or is that something you'll say?
So, we only do it in three instances. So, if you, you were talking like your classroom library, you would say, hey. Here are books that could, that would meet the needs of all the students that are in this classroom. So we would say, you might wanna recommend, uh, we can provide you book lists and say, these are books that. And I wanna, can I go back to the question? We, we also won't recommend books that um. Represent stereotypes of, of people. There is a book about um, Chief Justice sort of Myara. That it talked about how all Mexicans, something, something was, okay, and we won't recommend that book. That book has expanded characters, but it, but we feel it does not bring joy, it shows a stereotype that. Um, needs to be broken, even though the book is about a very famous person that we think those. That all students should know. But we won't recommend that on our book. So we go both ways. We are wanting children to feel joy, to feel, to be seen, to be validated. They can read enough on their own, common about negativity, negative things that. Could be engaged in soon. The other two, um, we, we can recommend, but. Like small group instruction. We may say, um, you all are only doing guided reading on below level, on level, above. Hey, that you should do more skill focus, small group. And we recommend, we know that you use iReady, we recommend that you need more training on how to use the teacher toolkit. So a lot of our recommendations is trying to use what you already have. If you don't have something, then we may recommend, we have just a couple partnerships. With uh, decodable, it's very hard to find good decodable books, and so we do have a couple partnerships there. But more than likely, our recommendation is, you have this, these resources. And someone said, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, well, this little bit of thing over here, you're not using, and it would actually be helpful if you used it. To support where we see a gap. I do want to say. So I do want to say, our instructional focus is instructional literacy. We are, if we say, oh, you do. Cami, you all are almost perfect. You do have nine percent of African-American students in your district, yet you, none of your classroom libraries reflect that you have one percent. That's the kind of information we're going to give you, it's not. We're here as a literacy organization that is focused on making sure that all students. Are receiving that same level high-quality instruction.
And I wanted to add, what should be on the slide in terms of the framework, that's only one, we have teaching and learning frameworks that are surrounding whole reading. Which you see, we have small group instruction frameworks, that again, specific callouts that we look in, and there's also foundation skills, so. We're not going in with just that, to think like that one specific lens, we do have other, as we're building out. Explanations, we are able to look at different things, and we have specific research phase, uh, frameworks there. Sitting those on one screen probably wouldn't be a good idea, so I wanted to make sure we can, we can do a snapshot, where we do have other focus areas. Um, that we have.
If you're set up, you're standing and doing the walk through.
Well, we're a medium-sized nonprofit, we have eighty-eight employees, but when we come to do a project. We do not want to like scare people that we're, so if more than likely, just two people. Uh, if we are looking at these nine schools, we would split people up, say. Two at this school, two at another school. But just two from CLI. Wouldn't be in there on the same. We wouldn't be, we would develop a calendar with Mr. Sacks, that Dr. Sacks, and. Say, he would, they need to tell us, here today, we really want you to come.
I was gonna say, wouldn't you wanna help? Sometimes it's. Too much. It's too much. It's dump all those people in that classroom, that teacher, that's overwhelming, it's too much.
We, we would definitely work with Dr. Green and. Cause I, one thing I'm asking, that if we move forward is, is Dr. Green to be able to make sure that we, we have a. Precursor for these principals to know, here's what we're doing, you know, so that they're not, that they have ownership in this process too, and they understand that we're just. We're just trying to seek in. Here's what we're doing, you know, so that they're not, that they have ownership in this process too, and they understand that we're just, we're just trying to seek information as to how we can make it better. Um, and a lot of resources of of support, um, you know, moving ahead in the year as well.
Do you look at how well um? Our county, like how, how the schools are doing in meeting the state standards? I know that you've got different standards in there, but um, on the, on the screen, I can't see all of them to your point. But I didn't know how that.
You should see is techs aligned to state standards. We're always, that's the way we know that you can make some progress. You're teaching something. Locally valued, but yet your state has, has been focused on. We would say, well, your instruction is uh effective, but it's not aligned to your state standards.
Just what our goal is to.
So I don't know if I'm clear like black and white, but the difference between model schools, this would be. Since last year, just the discovery phase for them, I'm not mistaken. So like they're still getting their feet wet in year two now.
They have to start working with teachers yet, which is a concern to me, but.
Black and white, like there might be, I don't want to be hands in the kitchen.
The, the initiative with model schools is to build the principals instructional capacity around. Uh, hi- high quality reinforcement in the classroom, being able to assess student engagement, to provide feedback to teachers. Where the gap is, is actually providing support for the teachers around how do they improve engagement? How did they, are the resources they have in the classroom, they're using? The um, effect, are they effective resources? Are they aligned to the state standards? Are they aligned? Are there curriculum maps that show the, the sequence and the progress and the scaffolding of learning? Are they created in the most um intelligent way to provide instruction to students? Model Schools is not really doing that type of work. Model Schools is, again, they're trying to build common um evaluation language. Or and and observation language for instructional leaders to provide feedback to teachers, but not necessarily to affect. The professional development, support mechanisms that are needed in the classroom. Then Children's Literacy. Literacy Initiative is, you know, in through the, through my, is taking right now. Is taking an assessment of what is in currently doing and making suggestions of how we can improve. If after we get that, that one of the suggestions they have is that there needs to be some specific teacher coaching around. How to use a curriculum map and do small group instruction where you're focusing on, on. Um, uh, standards, standards based as opposed to, you know, grouping students based upon, you know, specific deficiency levels. Then that may be something that we would consider engaging with them in, but that's not part of this contract. That would still be another conversation. Model Schools really isn't doing an inventory or an audit, if you will, of our curriculum. Uh, our, of the products that we have and the professional development and support mechanisms we have placed for our teachers.
So a good way to explain it is model schools helps to equip principals, to equip teachers, to equip students. But CLI is looking at, are we using the right equipment?
We're here to evaluate everything that you have. Is it being utilized to the best of? Its ability and do your teachers feel like what they have is helping them? Do their job. And if it's not, then we're gonna tell Dr. Sax, hey, this particular thing you're doing. Ninety percent of your teachers don't like it. So you need to make a decision and we can ask more questions. Why don't you like it? It might be, we don't think it's because they don't like it. We think they never had a strong professional development plan on how to actually use it. Uh, now that's, I'm making that scenario.
Now, I do think that, that the Children's Literacy Initiative does also similar work to model schools in building. Teacher, I'm sorry, uh, uh, principal leaders, principal instructional leaders, but that's not a kind of what it is that works for. So it's, I mean, can I correct them?
You're correct. We, we can coach principals, but I had some projects, we don't coach the principals. We only coach teachers. I mean, that's still the, we support principals by letting them know this is what's happening in your classroom. These are the areas that we feel like you need to explore, how you can support the teacher. But um, we would not interfere with what MOPs is, is doing. Um, and we only focus on literacy. We can not do math, we can not do any. Other particular content areas.
I think it's also important to point out that if after this, this audit, if you will, and we were to think about. Consider and execute an agreement for teacher coaching. That our district support folks, um, our academic specialists, our aims. It would be expected that they be part of this coaching model so that, that when they're not in the district, that that. Reinforcement from our instructional coaches within our school district can help reinforce those expectations as well. Because I think it's also important that our instructional coaches and our aims, you know, while they have been practitioners and, and successful practitioners. They too need professional growth as well. They need professional development opportunities. That's part of what this is.
Well, if our um instructional coaches and the aims. Not um part of that because they are working with educators, working with these teachers. And we have failed because that, that's the goal. And I, and I, I guess that's my concern about sometimes with model schools, are we just coaching the principals? We've coached them to death. We, it, there's only so much time that they. Teachers, it's a vicious cycle. We're coaching the principals to death. And then on personal learning days, how much are they able to uh implement? With their teachers. So are, is it getting down, is it filtering down, is it the classroom where it needs to be? That's a concern. Make sense?
Absolutely. And what I would, what I would say is that part of what the expectation is, is that. Through that work of the cohorts where they're um going in, they're observing the classrooms. And they're thinking about how do you, how do you identify for a teacher when you have done a walk, classroom walkthrough and you're providing feedback to the teacher? How do you give constructive feedback, one that is, that celebrates what they did well, but also gives them some, again, some. Uh, critical feedback to say, how could you improve the lesson by um increasing the rigor? Or the cognitive engagement of the students in the less, you know, it was a good lesson, but what could you have done to just elevate it a little bit more? So it's how did the, how does the principal have those conversations? That part is really where the rubber meets the road when it comes to effective evaluations. Through and 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 teacher reflection upon practice. And that's one of those things that is a skill that has to be developed and fostered with our principals. So the question is, is how does it get to the teachers? It gets to the teachers through the evaluation and the observation process. And the expectation that when you're doing five by five, which is, you know, five minutes, five minutes and five minutes classes a day, you know. Is it that you're having that meaningful feedback with the teacher around what it is that you solve so that they, they, they feel like. That classroom walk is comfortable, sir. And it's a lot of times where we struggle and where we falter. In supporting teachers is we don't provide that meaningful feedback. So that's, that's the, the focus of what we're trying to accomplish there. But I think it's also what may flesh out. From their, their monitoring is, is when they meet with teachers, when a principal comes in your classroom, are you, are you? Do you feel like there's meaningful feedback provided to you? Um, and then so that may say, okay, well. Uh, in our strategic, strategic suggestions for you to move forward is that. You may wanna consider if you're working with model schools is that they focus more on examples of how to provide that feedback with a teacher. So that it's actually occurring and maybe we need to have a checkoff that when you've gone to do that five by five, we have a checkoff that they've done five. You know, they've done their five by five this week or this, or today. But do we have a checkoff that they actually have meaningful feedback in conversation with the teacher? Maybe not. Maybe that's something we need to consider. Um, so I don't know, maybe you wanna, I don't know if I've answered it. But it's a good question because.
We have so many individuals that are, and as I said, are, are, alternative certification that know very little about teaching. Um, so even if you're working with them, if you don't have a concept of how to be a teacher. More or less.
But I thought how schools was doing with, they came to like leadership at the school level and then with the evaluations. Are not, are they not then teaching the teachers, a teacher that? Is, is, is that where the breakdown is?
Well, I think that when you, so, so when you have that, when you have that feedback set with the teacher, you know, it's, it's gonna last five. Maybe ten minutes at the most because just the time and efficiency. It may be that the teacher gives, uh, through that feedback, you're like, well, I don't understand how to, how to make the lesson more engaging. Then the principal would need to say, okay, well, let me help. I'm gonna find you some, or I'm gonna talk with the aims or. They're gonna reach out to Ms. Burpart or Lewis or probably say, hey, I have a teacher that is needing some additional support around. Increasing the, the rigor of, of their lessons. Can you have someone kind of in coaching? A lot of times that's not the principle that they will to, that is, doesn't, isn't doing that unless there's a professional development day specifically. And it's, it's sort of staff. Where at, and that's where the power of instructional coaches, academic specialists, that is the structure of what I'm trying to create here at the district office to support. What goes on in the schools and what goes on in the classrooms is to not only triage some of those methods. Those issues that maybe a principal sees through their normal walkthroughs and, and uh. I would say accountability monitoring of the fashion structure with the triage, but then the problem is that we start seeing patterns. The principal starts seeing a pattern through their walkthroughs that this is lacking in instruction. Then it's incumbent upon them to say, you know what, in my school's strategic plan, we need to focus on anemic awareness. We need to focus on fractions. We need to focus on um uh informational texts, whatever that may be. So that, that's what the school wide profession. So, so school wide professional development, individualized professional development, it's all part of establishing what those things look like. Are established through high quality walkthroughs, giving feedback to teachers so that there's anecdotal data, there's, there's hard data as well. I don't know if I've, I don't know if I've answered that question, but I think that, that the work that model schools has been doing to build instructional leadership. Capacity within our, our principal ranks. It's a, it is a process. Getting it down to the level of the teachers really is going to occur for the work that the principals are doing through the evaluation process. Their own strategic planning process and root cause analysis of data, you know, looking at their data and saying, why, why is it? Were we within these strands of, of literacy standards or of our math standards so that they can. Prescribe specific professional development for what they need for their school. And then of course, we're looking at the district office and we look at our district level data. To, to develop and to define what district wide professional development is looking like as well. And in order for us, you know, especially for me, three months in, to be able to establish where is it we need to focus that work. I think we have to have a good inventory and feedback from our teachers around where they feel they're struggling, where. What resources they don't feel are effective and it's like, why are we doing this if it's not effective? So that we have information to be able to plan how we can improve in the future.
Well, I'm, I'm not a fan of consulting groups. I've been known first time in law schools. Uh, that's just me personally in my professional life, I know.
We're a nonprofit. We do not do this for, um, we do this solely for the benefit of all students.
I, I believe. I need it from our, like a senior staff level, like that's what we hire them to do, to be able to evaluate the evaluators. Um, just go from the classroom down and. That's just where I'm coming.
Be my normal self and interject something. The statement that Mr. Martin just said is what is different about this. They're here to teach your principals on how to evaluate teachers. Evaluating teachers does not help them be better teachers. It helps you tell you where your teachers are. We are here to say, these are the things you're doing that are gonna help your teachers be better teachers. And if you choose to work with us, we're now gonna, we're here to just teach your teachers. We're not here to help the principal evaluate them. When the principal says we are struggling with the need of awareness. Our coaches, oh, we'll do the professional development and we'll pull a small group of your teachers together. They're the ones who needed instantaneous, not call. Not waiting. It is we address right then and there and support them. And you talked about the non-certified teachers. Like I said, we do side by side lesson planning with them. We actually modeled that, that scenario I shared about the story about the kindergarten class. The teacher had, and the coach took over the class, started teaching the class because this paraprofessional just didn't know what to do. And the technology didn't work. Within three months, came back to that same class. Told, she was doing small group instruction, five year olds who don't speak Spanish. To speak Spanish to me and tell me what they were learning. And that coach did not have to do anything. So our, our process is about exuding what they have. Did not know how to be a teacher. We taught her how to be a teacher. And principals really, one, they don't have that kind of time to say, I'm gonna now teach you how to be a teacher. That's what you need support for in your classrooms. And we're just going to be here to say, this is what we saw. This is what your teachers, your principals said to us. And here are recommendations that we. Think you need to take under consideration about moving.
And actually that district, what I want, because I don't want us to throw anything else out. They, they are. Loaded up. And um, I don't think that. Advice to throw anything else at them. So what you're saying there is what I would want to. I wanted to go directly um to the classroom and to that individual that's trying to work with those students. That's the idea would be for me.
I have two more questions. So how, how, how will we continue this? We're not doing it now. We're not able to do it now. Are we gonna do it in the future? Helping our teachers. It's like, right now, you cannot be able to. How will we get to the point where we can?
Yeah, that's exactly the, well, what we're proposing right now is actually then not going in and do a coach.
Right, right.
This is just to give us an assessment of what we need to focus on if we were to, in the future, utilize the service of coaching. It would be to build internal capacity so that it works themselves out of a consulting position, you know, in the district. You know, basically it's.
Our partner coaches. We partner with a district because you're, you hired us. And if not, you hired us to just go do, you hired us to work with you to ensure you get the best out of your teachers.
The goal would be is that we would no longer need the coaching because we have the capacity with the coaches of the district. Um, that's, that's the ultimate goal. If there was, if the coaching was there, I'm, I, what I'm hoping, hoping to get out of this right now is. Uh, recommendations on. uh, recommendations on what it is, and the feedback from our teachers as to what is working well, what, and, and it's not just about the anecdotal feedback they're gonna be getting, they're gonna be taking a look at the actual curriculum and the resources to say, here's how it's meeting the needs of students, or here's how it's lacking in students. You, you, you have a hole here that you haven't recognized, and here's what we're suggesting to do.
Right, I, I totally understand, but I guess my question took me back to if not, they, you all were doing a amazing job, why can't we?
You want to.
You can do that, I'm sure you're very down, but if we, if we had to.
They can get that same.
So, but that, they're looking at, you know, getting true feedback from us, they have to.
I, I, well, I'm gonna talk to that, but I do this at work. I will guarantee you, you will get a more candid and a more honest answer to people who do not work for the county. And provide absolute feedback, because they're not sitting there going, I'm not getting retaliated against. I hate to say that, but that is, that's absolutely true. And the reason why I can say that is because recently I've been retaliated against at my time. Well, so if someone were outside looking in and coming in and evaluating my time, I would feel so much more comfortable talking to you guys than talking to my own boss because of that very thing.
Just being very, we don't chew any, we don't, they, so.
I think the other thing is, I mean, that's a really good question, and I think you're exactly right, it does bring more open, honest conversations around the work, but I think the other thing is, is that, let's just talk about the capacity of the district level. Uh, I, I think that we have a tremendous amount of ability, um, and, and knowledge at the district level, however, I think sometimes when we're focused on the work, we almost get blinders, because we, because we're used to using something, this is, and I, I, this is one of the things I've always, I always hear, whenever I've transitioned to a different place, I'll ask the question, why are we doing it that way? Well, because we've always done it, you know, and so I think that, again, getting that, that external lens to be able to say, to have that sort of critical eye to make suggestions, they're not, they're not partial to one thing over another, but they have, they do, they have, do have the experience of diversity in different places to see what has been effective, to give us food for thought. So I think it's also about, we, we, I know we have the capacity to, to do the right things, but sometimes our, we have blinders on and we don't, we're not able to think outside the box, we're not able to think creatively, we're not able to identify the whole, because we didn't even know the whole exists, so.
Well, and then sometimes also, since we have blinders on, it's like when somebody mentions, or David mentions a thing to you, to others, um, then they would say, yeah, yeah, and yeah, I think I, I get what you're telling me, and realize that before.
They also might be able to see a connection that we might not be able to see because of, of the tree that's staring us right in the face and we can't see the whole person. I'd see how everything is intricately connected, and I think that's an advantage that, that we can, we can hold on to, grasp on to, honestly.
Or, uh, let me ask you this, are you, thank you, Dr. Green. Uh, are, are we looking, are you looking for a start further, or are you?
No, I, I, I think just probably, it's really just informal, it's informal feedback, I, I think, um, at some point, I'll probably touch base with you all over the next couple of days just to get your feedback and your sense of, you know, where you are, and then, you know, um, I do, I would like to be able to make a decision on it by the end of the week, but again, um, I wanted to be able to share this with you as to what I'm thinking and the, the work that could be provided, and if there's a level of, of, of openness to doing this, then hearing that feedback, any kind of concern, and I would want to hear that as well, but no, no formal.
Okay.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Uh, four point two, community eligibility provision, C E, C E P update. We are, pushing.
Good evening, President Long, members of the school, and I'm here this evening to provide, within overview of the community eligibility program, also as a B E P. This evening, we have three individuals from the West Virginia Department of Education Child Nutrition Programs with us. Um, Amanda Harrison, Anthony Credo, Carrie Kennedy, on the phone to help provide support and answer any questions if needed, and we also have Jay Butts, the treasurer, here to answer any questions.
Are they?
Yes.
She know.
That's their, yeah, they're there.
Okay.
You just can't see the.
Either that or. The West Virginia Department of Education Child Nutrition Programs presented Berkeley County with the opportunity to add additional schools and/or the entire school district to the C E P, the Community Eligibility Provision with a wait that is available to us through December of twenty twenty-four. This would give all students in Berkeley County the ability to receive free breakfast and lunch at no cost. This would benefit, would be perceived well in the community. In the following presentation, we will review the C E P program to allow the board to make an informed decision on how they'd like to proceed. I ask that you keep all your questions to the end of my presentation. If you think of something in the middle of my presentation, please write it down, you'll have an opportunity at the end to ask all your questions. Each slide of the presentation kind of builds off the previous slide, so your answers may be answered in the following slot. So what is community eligibility? Community Eligibility Provision, C E P, is a national school lunch program, school breakfast program, youth service option, that allows school districts to offer meals at no cost to all enrolled students without collecting household applications. Those being the paper meal applications that we send home with the students at the beginning of the school year, at any time during the school year that their financial situation may change. We hand key them at the child nutrition office to approve them for meal benefits, and they also so can submit those applications online as well. C E P was authorized on the Healthy Member Free Kids Act in two thousand and ten. So what's changed since the provision of community eligibility? On September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, they expanded access, USDA expanded access to the community eligibility provision by lowering the minimum identified student percentage, also known as the I S P threshold from forty to twenty-five percent. So this will give more high-needed schools options to elect C E P and offer all students healthy school meals at no cost to the family, when it's financially viable for the district to do so. With the lowering of the threshold to the twenty-five percent, that makes all Berkeley County schools eligible to participate in C E P. Also, as stated previously, we have a state waiver to add additional schools to C E P through December twenty twenty-four. Berkeley County currently has seventeen schools that participate in C E P. Those schools are listed in the list. Oh, these seventeen schools are in their cycle year for twenty-four, twenty-five, using certified data from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Data can be used for successful school years. This allows districts to lock in data for years. Studies of identified students increases, you can always reapply to get the higher percentage of students decreases, you will not lose reimbursement for those four years. Your percentage rate is locked in. It is financially valid for seventeen schools to participate in the program based on the reimbursement formula. The formula is calculated by using the identified student percentage. That's the number of students that are directly certified by the state that automatically receive meal benefits. We receive a list in our office for direct certifications, we call it, students that are automatically eligible for free reduced benefits. This percentage is listed in the third column of the program. It's labeled I S P. This percentage is multiplied by one point six to determine the percentage of meals served, claimed at the rate rate. This is seen in column two to the right. Any meals served over this percentage is claimed at the paid rate, that's the last column. Berkeley County puts all seventeen schools together to average this moment. What this is to play to, for the district, for the seventeen C E P schools, Berkeley County has ident, has four thousand six hundred sixty-one identified students at those seventeen schools with enrollment of eight thousand six hundred ninety-seven students. The data was certain. Identified student percentage is fifty-three point five nine percent. This allows Berkeley County to claim eighty-five point seven four percent. Taking the fifty-three point five nine percent times the one point six multiplier to get the eighty-five point seven four percent of the students at the school for free. The remainder students, the fourteen point two six percent, are claimed at the paid rate. Berkeley County receives funding for each meal served. Berkeley County has reimbursed four dollars and forty-five cents for each free lunch served, and forty-four cents for each paid lunch served. We receive two dollars and eighty-four cents for each free breakfast served, and thirty-nine cents for each paid breakfast. In addition, we receive nine cents per meal served for having menus that meet the meal pattern guidelines to nutritional standards. At the fourteen schools not participating in C E P, the students are charged for meals based on their meal status, free, paid, reduced. And we receive funding based on that individual status of the student. Parents and guardians are billed monthly for meals. Berkeley County currently has fourteen schools not participating in C E P. These schools are listed in the far left column. In addition, I provided you with the current identified student percentage. And the percentage of meals can be claimed at the free, that's the multiple layer factor of the one point six. If the district would decide to implement district-wide C E P, Berkeley County has nine thousand twenty-four students identified with enrollment of twenty thousand and fifteen. This gives Berkeley County identified student percentage be five point oh nine percent. This will allow Berkeley County to claim seventy-two point one four percent of the students at the free rate, and twenty-seven point eight six at the premium rate. Spread percentage rate will be locked in if board decides to implement district-wide C E P with the December twenty twenty-four waiver. Please remember that you can lock in the percentage for four years. The percentage of students claimed in the free never decrease, but can always increase if the number of identified students increases. Looking at future data for our county, October twenty, twenty-four data shows a lower number of identified students. This could potentially lower the percentage of students claimed at the free rate. Therefore, costing the county additional funds offset the cost of C E P. Think of it as if we enroll district-wide C E P prior to December, it's like getting a discount. Which potentially costs a bit less if we enroll the program with the current numbers presented once the new data is certified. Sponsor contribution would go up because the poverty level in Berkeley County is decreasing.
Which, I, I'm sorry, I was gonna chime in there, that's an important component, is that it decreased last year, uh, or it decreased from this last year to this year, which is actually going to affect our Title I money, because you know, it's rank and serve, they rank districts, and they serve districts based on their free and reduced rates, um, so I just want to reiterate that locking it in before December, if it was to go down again, we would, it would sort of be like a whole harvest for us, we would not, it wouldn't negatively impact us, however, if our free reduced rate went up, it would help us.
So just to give you an idea, with the certified data, because Stockton Sachs should have certified our data this afternoon for October data collection, I know the numbers, but to give you a relative figure, it looks like we're at I S P, identified student percentage of forty-two point one three percent versus the forty-five point oh nine, and right now, we lock in, I'm at seventy-two point one four, that would change to sixty-seven point four one.
If we don't lock it in.
If we don't lock it, if you're choosing to do C E P, if that's your.
Oh, is the I S P question?
Forty-two.
Forty-two and nine eight, and then slide is forty-five.
You are not keeping questions to me and Mr.. That's the happy song. Right now, our identified student percentage is forty-five point oh nine percent. But we multiply that by one point six to get the rate that we can claim by C E P, so it would be locked in the division as a whole. Two point one four percent be claimed at the free rate if we did it before December. Potentially, if we did it, let's say, down the road, August, after the new data certified, the number is going to go down. And it could potentially be around, given rough estimates, because I don't have the exact certified numbers, sixty-seven point four one as opposed to seventy-two point one.
Which makes just a big difference in our reimbursement, that's our reimbursement rate for federal government, so there's a benefit to, if we were to ever, if we were to choose to do C E P in the future, there's a benefit to locking it in now as opposed to waiting and saying, we're gonna implement next year, for example, that, that.
Would cost the division, it's the cost of reimbursement, we're gonna receive back, you would have to be offsetting the program. Out of fifty-five counties in West Virginia, only two counties, Berkeley and Putnam, do not participate district-wide C E P, so this is about to show you all fifty-three of the other counties are division-wide or district-wide C E P, and Berkeley and Putnam are select the schools that participate in C E P. The impact of C E S P, there would be an increased sponsor contribution, the cost to the child nutrition program, that would be the transfer from the general fund to offset the cost of implementing the program to district-wide. It's approximately seven hundred thousand a year on the conservative side, but for every five percent increase in participation, the sponsor. But for every five percent increase in participation, the sponsor contribution decreases by approximately a hundred thousand.
So as an example, uh, what's, I'll look at. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I should have followed the rules.
It could also potentially increase labor for increased participation. That's one of those things that kind of go hand in hand. An additional equipment may be needed too, so we may need some other purchases to help offset if we have an increase in participation. And it could potentially cost for increased trash and pickup. So what are the benefits of county wide C E P? We eliminate those paper meal applications that have to be sent home and processed. We eliminate billing for meals that's done monthly that crossed approximately forty thousand dollars a year. We eliminate unpaid meal charges for students with the time of the presentation, we were owed almost six hundred thousand dollars unpaid meal charges. And we have the potential to increase meal participation. USDA studies have shown that schools that participate in C E P see about a seven percent increase on average for lunch participation and a twelve percent increase in breakfast participation compared to the schools that do not participate in C E P. So let's look at an example. Potomac Intermediate is an example for the child nutrition we will get later. See how it can impact C E P? Last year in F Y twenty four, Potomac averaged a hundred and fifty four meals per cook per day. Child Nutrition makes a recommendation to the board to add labor, typically the schools around a hundred and forty meals per day per cook. Child Nutrition begins watching schools when they reach around a hundred and thirty meals per day per cook. And then makes a recommendation to the board during budget season to add labor when the school's over a hundred and forty meals per day per cook. Our office calculates meals per cook per day each month and does a yearly average for every school. So based on the hundred and fifty four meals per cook per day in F Y twenty four, a budget recommendation was made to add additional cook for Potomac last year, lowering the meals per cook per day to a hundred and thirty. Potomac participated in the C E P program and increased meal participation by five percent. The meals per cook per day would increase to a hundred and thirty seven. If participation increased by ten percent, the meals per cook today would increase to a hundred and forty three point five. At this point, Child Nutrition will make the recommendation to add an additional cook. So we have seen Berkeley County follow USDA studies showing a seven percent increase in lunch participation and a twelve percent increase in breakfast participation for implementing C E P. Potentially, five additional cooks would be needed. This would cost approximately two hundred and twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. However, with the increased participation and the increased spot, the additional sponsor contribution decrease help offsetting the cost for the additional labor. This slide shows.
Do you know what that number, if we were looking at seven hundred thousand, if you're increasing, did you say about seven percent?
Seven percent for lunch, twelve percent for breakfast, so average is about ten. So think about cutting off two hundred thousand dollars, which your labor's about two hundred thousand, so they're about.
You're about seven hundred thousand. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. This slide shows the last six years financial revenue for the Child Nutrition Fund. Transferred from the general fund to the Child Nutrition have averaged four point five to six plus million yearly. The seven hundred thousand would be in addition to this. In addition, you can see the money received at the local, state and federal. Would be the dollars that we take in collecting for, um, meals served for the children we charge for meals.
But the federal would go up also.
Yes.
The federal would go up because it's a rate of, and the participation goes up. But we're looking, what we would be looking at, for example, two thousand and twenty four, um, if all things were created equal, the additional expense and work to implement the free meals.
I mean, we're being locked in for four years. Yes.
The rate.
The rate would be locked in for four years unless our rate went up. We can always get more money, they can never take money away, but just to be locked in. So to the point of questions. You know, she's got them. All right. So this program would be very beneficial to students and parents in Berkeley County. Only two counties in West Virginia don't participate in the district wide C E P. However, there's a financial cost to the district winning part to implement the program in division law. If we implement the program prior to December twenty twenty four, Berkeley County, we can see a higher identified student percentage based off the certified data. For ways to implement the program, the percentage could go down, blocking the district additional funds due to the decreased poverty rate in the county. Like I said earlier, it's like getting the program at a discount and ride to December twenty twenty four if it's a priority of the. I hope you find this information helpful in making an informed decision about living for with the district wide C E P. Questions? Question board?
Did we, did we miss out a year on this process for not doing this last year?
No, it's been an option since C E P has come on board. It's just not in town, right? When the help, yes, twenty ten. And Berkeley County has added schools, from my understanding, incrementally each year.
The I, where were the I?
I S P.
I S P was lowered from forty to twenty percent down last year than we did in the old school units.
I think what he's asking is, did we miss out on locking in lower rate if they had done it?
I'd have to go pull all the rates from previous years.
Maybe our folks at the Department of Ed could answer that question. I don't know if they, if they have any idea. I think the question.
I know last, the reason we locked in the rate of twenty three, twenty four for last year is because our rates went up. So we received higher reimbursement, so that's why we're using twenty three, twenty four rate. And we also brought on Valley View at the time last, this year at the beginning of the year because it made sense financially.
Yeah, this is Amanda Harrison with the Department of Education. Um, yes, so that is correct. This has been an option since two thousand and twenty three. And, um, we did conduct some outreach with folks. And at the time, um, it, it was just decided from Berkeley County at the time to not bring on a mid, what we call a mid-year election. Um, but they did pick up one school, as Jennifer mentioned, at the start of your school year. Um, and then with Mr. Sacks, uh, Dr. Sacks coming on board, um, he's made it a priority from the get-go to bring this conversation forward. Um, and that's just a testimony to his leadership, um, and the value of what he has seen possible through C E P, um, when he was superintendent of Cabell County. So, um, while this is a new day, um, and this data is current, um, and that's why we have this waiver for your leadership to consider, um, this opportunity before you. Uh, Jefferson County did a mid-year election last year. Um, Montegalia County did a mid, mid-year election. And I think we may have twisted Putnam's arm to bring on a couple of schools mid-year last year. So as Jennifer said, sometimes it is a process and so forth. Um, but this is good information for you all to have before you at this time.
Thank you. Um, just one other question.
Yes.
I know in the past, we've always had these delinquents, people who didn't pay probably couldn't afford, uh, help. They, they just wasn't doing it. And, and didn't fill out the forms.
I'll be honest with you, it's a struggle to get the form. Our office makes a lot of phone calls daily because the forms come in, they're incomplete. We need additional information. People don't return our phone calls. We make multiple calls, we document it, but unfortunately, we can't process the application unless it's complete. So that is a struggle. And I'm sure a lot of those families are eligible, but they probably struggle filling out the application as well.
I'm guilty of being called storytime Murphy. But this, this means a lot to me. I've shared this in the past, um, with this present board. Years ago, when I went to school, I was, I lived in the Porter, I'd been approached. We had to be poor to live in the projects. Often, back then, I would go home, not because there was food. But I didn't want to sit around watching other people eat when I could. And so I appreciate Dr. Sacks' effort here to change the direction for the county and build this more.
Also, I want to let you know, we don't refuse any child with the ability to pay.
Still, one time when we were giving them peanut butter and jelly while everybody else had meal.
But that, I just want everyone to know in the community, that's not the case, that we do not. Every child that comes through the line, we service them regardless of meal status, regardless of their ability to pay. No one is denying it.
It wasn't an option when I was younger, and it was a different time. But I'm, I'm glad that we are going to throw the net out and catch all the fish.
If we choose to do so.
Pardon me?
If we choose to do so.
If we choose to do so, and we are aware of that option. And I just want to make, I just want to share as a form of child experience what this mean, will mean to other people. Thank you.
Questions?
Well, I think just a, I worry about trying to, tell me if you can get five additional cooks, getting those five additional cooks.
He gets a word. Yes, I know what you're saying. It's a struggle every day with stuff.
Yeah.
That thing, I, I hear you.
I mean, it's wonderful, but trying to get those cooks and keeping them on that ward. Then I also worry, tell Dr. Sacks this, the waste, food waste, that we cannot, um, he mentioned this to me. Because I think that in other locations, they have what you should call the food tables.
Sure table.
Sure table.
We do have those at some of our schools. They're not required, they're optional. So some of the building administrators do implement them. It just varies from building to building.
And I guess, um, because of federal guidelines, like what we don't serve, that we can't take to the rescue mission or anything else before you had to go and track it.
There's a fine line there. There's rules and regulations. Can it be done? Yes, but that, it's not just, it's, the health department gets involved because the transporting time and temperature, food safety and distribution. And that's our local authority as opposed to state.
Yeah, and this is Amanda again, if I may speak to it, you know, it, it's a really important topic about food waste, right? Because we're all concerned, you know, we want to feed children, we don't want to feed garbage cans. And I can just tell you from a national perspective that on any given day, we have over one hundred thousand schools participating in the National School Lunch Program. That's almost seven times more than the number of McDonald's we have in the nation. And I bring those numbers up before you because this issue of food waste, it is an ongoing situation that districts do have to continue to evaluate and find strategies to reduce. And sometimes, I know Dr. Sacks and I have talked about, sometimes it's something as simple as working with your master schedulers to really check in and make sure we're giving kiddos the appropriate amount of time to make sure that they have that, uh, you know, twenty minutes for lunch, uh, that, that they need to be able to have time to consider. We've also seen great successes in sometimes flipping the order of recess. Um, my kids are older now, but when they were in elementary school, um, it was, uh, everyone wanted to hurry up and finish their lunchtime so that they could go to the playground. They wanted to be the first one on the slide or, you know, their favorite swing set or what have you. We've seen success when sometimes that order is reversed. And at the elementary school, they have recess first, the kiddos run and get all of the energy out and they come back and they sit and they're more focused, kind of worn out a little bit, so they can just kind of sit still and eat. So those are low cost, no cost strategies that were always available to help your district talk through. Um, because we do recognize that that is a real challenge and we're committed to helping find solutions.
Good suggestions, thank you. Some, or concerns.
Uh, I know Mr. Buss is on, um, just his thoughts on this and, um, the impacts to the. Is in common.
Hey Jim, you're muted, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. And, and I know, you know, with, with great intent is to feed every child, but with that intent, there's also a cost. I believe the cost presented is lower than what the actual cost will be. Because you also got to factor in the increase in food costs, particularly if you're increasing the meal costs, and that wasn't discussed too much tonight. And if you look at what we transferred in the last several years, uh, much of that's been because of increased food costs uh, to run the program we currently have. But again, it's, it's a great noble thing to try to do, but there is a cost associated with it.
Well, once again, I do worry about the food waste, the costs are so high and the waste is high.
You know, uh, one of the things, thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Buss also, because I think that, you know, I think we do have to be able to be, you know, I think part of our, our, my responsibility as superintendent in working with my staff is to make sure that we're making, um, decisions on, um, what's going to be best for our students, but also making sure that we, we're being financially, good financial steward to taxpayer dollars. Um, and of course, that's obviously a charge that the board has in approving the budget and approving expenditures. I, I will say, I think that, um, you know, two things, and the, and the first is that when we talk about childhood hunger, um, you know, Mr. Murphy, you know, shared his experience. Um, and there's countless experiences that, that I could talk about also of seeing students prior to C E P being an opportunity, um, where, um, you know, food insecurities created problems and barriers for students to be at school and ready to learn because of their own anxieties of exactly where they're going to get the next meal. But I have to say, one of the things that was a, a very interesting lesson that I learned was that food insecurities don't just affect our students that qualify. It can also affect our, our students from what we would maybe call considered affluent families. Because we never know when a family is dealing with their own financial hardships, overextending their own budgets. You know, and when we think about inflation and all those sort of things, the question, I, how many of our students are living in, in situations where families may be, from a perception standpoint, doing very well, but they may actually be going without and we don't even know about. And, and, and granted, that may not be pervasive, but I just wanted to say that we never know where those insecurities come from. And if we think about, um, from a public school standpoint, being able to provide the best education for every, for every single student, making sure that, when we think about their social emotional health, that we're, we're also thinking about, are they actually in school, ready to learn, not from social, not just social emotional in their minds, but from a, a food insecurity standpoint as well. And so I do think that it's one of those, this is one of those equal, equalizers that, that can exist. So again, you know, I, I think that it, it's a big decision. Um, I do think that when you look at other school districts across the state, you know, Cuna County is an example, who is a very large school district. Financially, they've been able to make it work for their school district and other, I don't know, uh, and the Department of Education could probably comment on this, but I don't know what their poverty rate is compared to ours, which is higher.
Providing to a risk of five counties, and I highlighted two in yellow bars of them.
Which were on the lower end of the spectrum.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
To show you the rates in other counties are being reimbursed.
Now, I don't know how our number compares with other districts across the state, the nation that are in those same, you know, I guess my question is, is, and maybe the Department of Education, Department of Education could maybe shed some light on this. But if our I S P and the percentage is at sixty six percent of this other charge, how does that compare with nationwide other school districts that are participating in C E P? Is there, is there another, is there a large percentage of students that are around that threshold that are also implementing it?
Ours was seventy two percent.
No, I'm sorry, seventy, oh, I'm sorry, seventy two, I was, oh, I was, yeah, seventy two percent.
Amanda, can you speak on the rest, other states, of what percentage they go full C E P?
Yeah, so we've definitely had counties come on for a lower percentage. Um, and, and then we have the, the stark opposite, you know, counties that are almost near a hundred percent need. Um, I would say your kind of statistical neighbor here, uh, in terms of I S P and direct serve. And Carrie, you may correct me if I'm wrong. I, I say that they're very similar to like a, a Cabell, a Wood County in terms of the number of students you have who are coming from households with public benefits such as SNAP and so forth. Um, uh, what I can say is that we have not had a district make the decision and then, you know, find, find a problem that couldn't be solved, right? Um, and, and Tony made a good point earlier today. A lot of your costs are going to go up whether you adopt C E P or not. So your cost of food, if it's going the same way the other costs are going to go, they're going to rise regardless. Um, for the districts that have adopted this, um, they have seen great successes. Um, you know, they've seen kiddos who, who have been more nourished and, and so forth. Um, there's also another element that we don't talk about a lot, and that is kind of the generosity of households and families to be more willing to participate in other types of fundraisers, right? So like, when this is a part of the comprehensive package of your educational community, free meals or complimentary, buses, iPads and so forth, when you do need those extra above a. When you do need those extra above and beyond, perhaps you're doing a fundraiser for the field trip or the band or athletics. We're seeing that parents tend to respond to those things more willingly. Because they've got that extra opportunity to do so, because. There, that just opportunity is available to them because those other things have been taken care of for, through the school district. So I don't think I accurately answered your question, but what I will say is that we've seen it run the gamut. We've seen folks come on. Like right above fifty percent, Montegalia County is probably one. They were hovering around fifty three, fifty four percent need. They went all in. Um and then again, we've seen the districts that are higher into the spectrum, a hundred percent, obviously, that's, that's a no brainer. They go all in.
This question was nationwide.
Yeah, I I was just asking, you know, nationwide, but I think it was answered that I was looking at something the others may see. You know, Jefferson County is at fifty nine percent, uh Mon County is at fifty six. So, you know, um.
Well, we do know California has mandated C E P. Um California has universal meals. So if a district in the state of California meets the threshold, they have to take it. They have to elect it. Um South Carolina has a similar situation, so it it'll vary state by state, but we have eight states in the nation that have universal free. Uh every state that has a universal free law or a healthy school, healthy school meals for all law legislation. Um C E P mandate is always in there. So so that's another element when you're looking at nationwide statistics.
Um when a school's paper is a test, four hundred students, and you're preparing meals for four hundred students, but fifty of them packed. So. We don't prepare meals for every student that walks in the door. We do production records and we plan at the elementary level. They get a meal count. Intermediate schools, they get a meal count, but we use cycle menus that are four weeks. So the staff gets a good idea of how many meals they're going to serve off past history. And we also um batch hook to allow them to hook between the serving lines. That's why it was important. What Amanda said about allowing adequate time to eat and not rushing the lunch periods for us. I know instruction is very important, but to allow the cooks the opportunity to hook between the line to provide a fresher product for the students. And cook to order so that we don't have that additional food waste.
Because, you know, uh I've worked in school, I knew that you, it's fifty years ago, you gave a meal count for the.
Yes.
But when everybody's free and everybody's free, I didn't know if you just.
We still do the same, same concept regardless, the same concept of counting, doing the meal count regardless of the C E P or non C E P still. Okay, that's good to know.
So really, um no decision needs to be made tonight. Uh I, we wanted to give you information for you to to consider. Um and if this is something that the board wants to further consider, then it would need to be placed on a board. So, you know, at some point, you know, um I would recommend that that either of you reach out to me and let me know how you feel about this one. And um or or Jack, uh I'm sorry. Jackie Long. Mrs. Long, uh so that, so that together she and I could just determine whether or not we need to place a.
But in other words, we have until December to make this decision.
Well, we can always add schools to C E P. The the issue is adding before December, where those rates that I did, it was a cost issue.
Is it before December thirtieth or December first or?
At the end of December, Amanda, correct?
Yeah, you're, it it to, actually to clarify, your only opportunity to add additional schools this school year. Will run through December thirty first, twenty twenty four. If you don't add on any others, you have to wait until next school year to let us know your intention.
And we just have.
I'm sorry.
Our new data would be certified, so then we'd be looking at different numbers. I mean, it's your situation that I gave you tonight, it would be exactly accurate. And based on forecasting of the number, it looks like, like I said, the poverty rate has decreased. So it would be an additional cost to the district to subsidize the program.
I would like, it's my recommendation that we make a decision in the next. Or so, next two board meetings by that time. You know. Having a relation.
Thank you. We have a business.
I have. First best, that's the last board meeting, say the portal, the transition program.
He deserves a pass.
Get one for Dr. Thank you.
Yeah, I did it. Oh, you know what? He probably didn't take one itself.
Sue.